Okay, any motion to allow Captain Stevens to participate remotely?
I'll make that motion.
Second, any discussion of questions? All right, all in favor?
I'm second.
Ballot, okay, Captain, all in the room, all vote.
Kreister?
Here.
Eddie?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Garrett?
Here.
Beeson?
Here.
Eight aldermen present, zero absent.
We begin with consent of agenda items for women at previous meetings. Make a motion to adjutant. Make a motion to adjutant.
Second.
Any discussion of questions? Okay, we'll call over.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eight A's, zero N's.
All right, I don't see anything from Benton Associates or Milano and Brenlow on the agenda, so we'll move reports of officers and start with Steve.
All right, the first item is the second reading of the changes to the B1 overlay district if appropriate to approve the ordinance.
Make a motion to the ordinance.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion of questions? We'll call over.
Eddie?
No.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Six A's, two N's, that's ordinance number 1992.
Okay, the next item is second presentation of an ordinance approving amendment to the whiskey bills redevelopment.
Make a motion to pass that ordinance.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion of questions? We'll call that.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Eight A's, zero N's, that's ordinance number 1993.
The next item is the first presentation of an ordinance prohibiting the use of lawn mowers as motor vehicles.
Chief, how are we going to enforce this ordinance? Like I was talking to Justin about this ordinance. Every year in the summertime, I'll ride my mower from home up here to, what the heck, the power place up here, Matt Byers' place, and I had him sharpen my blades up, then I'll drive it back home because I don't have a trailer or truck to carry it. The way this ordinance is, if I'm not going to yardyard mowing grass, I can get a $750 fine for riding up here with my mower. How are we going to feel on it?
Well, the purpose of this request is people with no decks, driving nighttime, no intent to be mowing, no intent to be in pit equipment, gasoline, anything that connects with the mower, they're using them to transport, use trailers to haul property.
More people.
More people. Drive to the gaming machines to game. We're not concerned about people who have a legitimate reason to fulfill the responsibility to mow and grass. We don't have time for that, but we get complaints, we've connected some of those and they're using them to haul with trailers or stole the property. So this would be a way for us to squeeze down on the wrong purpose. That's all we're in, that's all we have time for.
I just don't want to get a ticket to pick my mower up there to have it sharpen blades up and take it to drive it back.
If it's pertaining to mowing, honestly, I mean, if it's pertaining to mowing, we don't, we don't have time for it about that, to be honest with you.
Right. I don't see it as an issue.
Okay, I will. I'll make a motion at first reading, man.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Um, I don't mean this to sound judgmental, but some of the people obviously probably aren't going to pay the fines. Do we have a contingency plan for when that happens? Is there something that we could add to help you with that?
We do, uh, the contingency plan, I talked to the state's attorney, and you're required to have a valid driver's license to operate any motor vehicle which is defined as law mowers motor operated. He will enforce the driving revoked or suspension tickets, which most of them don't have anyways. So we could ramp up enforcement if there's no compliance or if they don't pay fines. But yeah, um, we're not into towing season lawn mowers, but the state's attorney said he would if it became a nuisance beyond what we could do with a normal ordinance, so.
So you don't need anything else added?
I don't, I don't think we'll need it.
This will be enough for you.
This will be enough, we'll try, and if it doesn't, if we don't get compliance, and we don't, we'll get compliance through the courts, then we'll, we'll go criminal, we'll traffic them.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. Any motion, do we need a second, or somebody want to make a motion to pass at that first reading?
I'll make a motion.
Are there any singing lyrics?
Oh, you want to pass.
First reading, let's expand first reading and pass. We'll count, move to my portion, and then pass.
Okay, I'll second.
Any further questions or discussion? Let's pass it then, we'll call over.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Eight A's, zero N's for ordinance number 1994.
Here goes, Chief, have at it.
Uh, the next item is the first reading of an ordinance amending the liquor code regarding Sunday hours. This will allow or extend the hours on Saturday night, Sunday morning, from midnight to 1:00 a.m.
Oh, okay, listen.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion of questions?
We didn't have any problems, Chief, right? From that time slot, that one, yeah, that one hour.
I don't know if we had additional calls, but it wasn't enough to, because we have manpower, so I don't see an issue with the law.
Okay.
Go on, go on, go on.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Eight A's, zero N's for first reading.
And then the last item is a resolution approving a amended consulting services agreement that has to do with the start date for the services.
Make a motion to pass the resolution.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion of questions? We'll call over.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
No.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Six A's, two N's, that's resolution number 24-51.
Great.
Okay, two items. I'd like to thank Bob Smith for getting the Lucas Brothers to refinish the stage at the Chautauqua. And I'd like to thank the Lucas Brothers and one of their son-in-laws. And then I need to thank Kent Taylor because I called Althorfer because they needed the three-phase generator, and I said, "We got three of your generators now, can you come up and deal on renting us this three-phase generator?" And the thing I signed when I went in, was your name. So, that's working out great. I think it's $285 if they do charge us, it was one day. And then the other thing is, you don't have to do it tonight, I don't want you to start thinking about, like, a thing we're dealing with this week is a lady on a fixed income has a taller dog and wants to put up a taller fence, and we are making her get a survey, like 700 bucks to find her pins at a fence, or in a yard that she's lived in for 20 years, and the fence was there before they got there. I think they probably ripped the pins out from the fence. I don't know that, but I don't think any of the surrounding communities make you do that or even go out on site. They just make you wear the rules of the permit. So just, if there's some way we can help people like that, figure it out.
All right, do you want to hurry?
Um, I'm asking council to approve the application process for the ITEP grant program for the downtown sidewalk project. The, it's kind of, like one of three or kind of a combination, but essentially we're looking at new sidewalks in the downtown area, Locust Street from first to the end of fourth, and then on Second Street from Oak to Poplar. So with the program through ITEP, worst-case scenario is an 80/20 match, meaning that the city would have to provide 20% of the project cost, which would equal $208,462. So in the grant application process, you have to determine what your community's score is. And the city of Pana's was pretty low, but that community's score is not considered until after all of the grant applications are reviewed by the application review team and then subsequently selected. So say the city of Pana's application was selected, they take that application, compare it to the other ones that were selected, and then at that point look at what the community's scores are and how they are comparable to one another. After speaking with Lee Beckman at Milano and Brenlow, given what the city of Pana's community's score is and compared to, like, past programs for ITEP, there's a very strong possibility that we could receive 100% funding on this program. But I wanted to include the 20% as a worst-case scenario, me, in the event that there's others communities that scored lower than we did that are selected too. But it could either be 20%, it could be 10%, or it could be that, you know, the city doesn't have to put any match portion up. But I thought, play it safe, let's get approval for the 20% in the event that that's what happens. And that amount is $208,462. And also with number three, it states that that would come from business district funds.
Make a motion to apply for ITEP grant, place in downtown sidewalk project.
Second, questions for hurry? Okay, we'll call over.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Um, item number two, so we're kind of dancing back to this topic. Initially, whenever we did the USDA rural business development grant for the Plaza project, we initially were going to use the $200,000 CDS grant from Representative Avery Born's office whenever she was our local rep. Then we flip-flopped it, said we were going to use business district and then use the CDS for ITEP. We flipped it back and forth after Lee Beckman and I talked about it, but come to find out, we cannot use the $200,000 CDS grant as a match portion for the ITEP grant. You have to be able to leverage state first federal funds, you can't do federal on federal, and very rarely can you do state on state. But since the $200,000 CDS grant is a state capital grant, and the RBDG grant for the Plaza is a federal grant, I have received confirmation from the USDA that it is an eligible match source. So I'm asking to now have that changed back after finding that out, and ask for approval to change the designation of match funds for the RBDG grant for $200,000 of the CDS grant, plus an additional remaining balance of $26,98 from the business district funds. So we'll have the RBDG grant, the CDS grant, and then $26,98 from business district, and that will make up the $415,000 project budget for the Plaza project. So I'm just asking that that be documented, that we are switching that back.
I'll make a motion to change the designation of match funds for RBDG Plaza project, $200,000 from CDS grant funds, plus additional $26,98 of business district funds.
I'll second.
Second, any questions on that one? Okay, go on.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Eight A's, zero N's.
I really don't feel like we need to do anything with number three, because we kind of lumped it in with one. Ken, is that right?
Yeah.
That's the match portion for the ITEP.
His motion was to approve the application, so I would vote on this too.
Okay, so I'm asking for council approval to designate the match portion of the ITEP, ITEP grant application in the event that the city has to have a match portion, that's the, the max amount of 20%, equalling $208,462 to come from business district funds.
I'll make a motion to change designation of match funds for ITEP downtown sidewalks to $208,462 from business district funds.
Second, any questions on that one? We'll call there.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eight A's, zero N's.
I want to apologize for having to do this a couple of times now, but we do try to think of the, the best way possible to expand these grant funds that were given, so it just sometimes you, you're told one thing and then you research a little bit more and you find out another. So we just try and spread these funds out as far as we can, so hopefully that's all taken care of. Item number four, just wanted to give an update on the Plaza project. Was that last week?
Yes.
Okay, last week we had an architect come, kind of just view the area, take measurements, kind of give us some things to consider in the layout of the Plaza area, but he has drafted up a proposal for the city to consider in architectural renderings, engineering stuff, what all, was included on that?
Plans for construction and the 3D renderings.
Yeah.
And a structural engineer to look over something about tying the things down or something.
Because we'll need those to put that, to put the construction out for bid, but that will be, that proposal will be coming at the next meeting for you guys to vote on, but I just wanted to give you guys a heads up, since having all of the funding secured for the Plaza project, we've really been able to start actively, you know, working on this project. So on the next council agenda, you will have a proposal from this architectural firm for you guys to vote on.
It's a lot easier, oh, you have all your guts in, right?
Yes, it does.
Ready to go?
Yes.
Any questions for hurry? Okay, we'll go on.
Um, all I have is I need approval to pass a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code. This is to close out section 97-20047-00-RS. This is a resurfacing project back from 1997 that the Illinois Department of Transportation found in an audit that they never properly closed out. It is not costing us any money, we've already paid for it, but we have not properly appropriated our motor fuel tax funds from that year to close it out. So this is just so they can close the project out and get it off our books.
1997.
Yep.
Make a motion to pass the resolution. Are you on council that then?
Yeah.
Second, questions?
Let's go through the cracks.
All right, we'll call over there.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eight A's, zero N's, that's resolution 24-52.
All right, Daniel?
I'll follow.
Tanya?
I'm going to have to ask you a question.
All right, we'll go on. I have three or four. First one is any approval from the county for the trick-or-treat nights for Halloween in October 30th and 31st from 5 to 8 p.m. Make a motion.
I'll second.
Second, any questions on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, trick-or-treat. Approve to hire a, I need approval from council to hire the top candidate for the flex position, and that individual I believe is said with a successful background check and frequent clinic, is still exactly young. I'll make that a motion. Second, questions?
Yeah, I had a question, what, what flexible position is that?
That's the water plant where they fill in vacations, and then when they're not working the water plant, they work at the street department.
Okay, thank you.
Your one. Hiring, so let's do a roll call for that.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Take the item authorizing emergency purchase for two six-inch check valves for the high service pumps at the water treatment plant for municipal equipment, not from a municipal equipment company, the amount of $6,900, if it's something that is necessary and in the budget. Make that a motion, favor. Second, any questions?
Second.
All right, we'll call.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Okay, fourth item is I need approval for a class A1 liquor license for personal dorms or Monstera Lounge at 110 North Poplar. Background check came back clear.
I want to make a motion to table this because I fear that we may have a conflict of interest with you, it being your girlfriend and with her being on the zoning committee, and also I think we need to measure to be on the safe side, because it can't be, but so much distance from a church near Catholic on a church. And then we can look into those things and then go from there.
I don't think that is relevant, but I have a motion, does anybody want to second that motion?
Second.
All right, let's go on.
Before we go any further on that, I know we're, we've had the application for trying to get some funds from the tip from business district, and we haven't had a, trying to get formed together to do this, who's going to deal with this last Friday, because I know on, when we talked to her before, her lease is all based upon funding, and we haven't done anything with that. It might be worth, you know, her holding this up, we get this taken care of between the next council meeting, because we haven't done anything on the funding with it yet.
That's up to that, with that particular application, this is just for a liquor license. I don't think that's going to stop the business from occurring.
When they're doing it anyway, because when she was in town with us, she said, "Well, based upon the tip and stuff."
That's for funding, yes, but I think the business is still going to occur no matter what, whether the license, whether the.
Because they haven't talked, I didn't know what was going on with it.
Yeah, that's a different discussion in that committee, but this particular thing is just for a liquor license. All liquor licenses are approved pending a background check. The background check became clear, so no matter what personal issues Alderman Garrett may have, it's completely irrelevant. This is not.
I'm not talking about a personal issue.
You just stated it was a personal issue because of the relationship that I have and the fact that she's on the zoning.
If you're a liquor commissioner, if you read the Illinois State Walker Liquor Commissioners, it says you can't be on certain, and our own ordinance says you can't be on the zone, on the committee, and you fill license because of your, that'll mean she's not going to get it, you just may have to appoint a different person to be the liquor commissioner to get it to her.
Show me where it says that.
Well, I didn't like bringing up it in the unit this morning.
Okay, so we have a first, we have a first and a second, let's go on.
Scott?
Yes.
This is the table.
This is the table.
The table, yes, for me.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Eight A's, zero N's.
I know it's over 100 feet, I think the order, isn't it 100 feet, chief?
I don't know how to judge distance, but.
As much as we measure a lake loss out there, I'd say it's over 100 feet.
Yeah, see, I don't measure anything, judge.
You're on a real.
I know there's a church there, and I just, I just double-check.
We'll, we'll measure, but I'm just measuring lots and that, I'd say it's quite 160 feet away from that church.
I just know it was close, that was all.
We'll move on to reports of committees, community safety.
Nothing at this time.
Any operations?
No report, just that we've been measuring lake lots, and we did the interviews last week for this position, and I want to thank the three supervisors for taking care of that. I sat in with them, and it was good teamwork. That's it. And they're going to be mowing streets this week, if it's not raining, on the east end. We've got a couple places out of the lake to do, and then they're going to start on the 25th on the east end of town, depending on weather, that's it.
The paragrounds, when they're, right, and they're going to be shut down?
Yeah, they're going to prime it first, and then they're going to oil it. But whatever, you're going to prime it twice, aren't you, Chris?
Yep, we're going to prime it, let it sit for two to three hours, and then we'll come back, export some oil, and put some rock pot in it. But it's got to be closed for three to four hours, that's the big hangup.
It depends on the weather.
Yeah, depending on the weather.
That's all I have in this region.
All right, for item number one, I'd like to make a motion to send the ordinance fixing this hour, the local officials, back to the administration committee.
I would like to make a motion to.
There's already been a motion, our second.
And we didn't add it, a motion?
No.
Okay.
First and second, go on.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
No.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
What are we voting on?
Voting back to add.
Yes.
Oh, I thought we were...
No, send it, could you hand that to the ladies and gentlemen?
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's, to send the ordinance back to administration.
All right, number two, we have to make a motion to third-invoice for Larry Herrmann in the amount of $4,500 to the tolling of the playground through, and this would be paid for the motor fuel tax.
Second that.
Any special questions? We'll call over.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.